Caucus meeting to order. We have two public hearings tonight and then we'll move right into the regular agenda, so I'll ask the clerk to read item number one.
Item number one, a public hearing establishing zoning regulations for halfway houses.
Okay, and number two, a public hearing?
Item number two, amending the Schenectady City Code to include a provision for towing fees and fee schedules.
Okay, as I said, these are both public hearings. We'll go on into the regular agenda then. Item number one for final consideration.
For final consideration, an ordinance abandoning and discontinuing paper streets in the Woodlawn Preserve.
We had a public hearing on this and again was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two?
Item number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 264 zoning of the administrative code of the city of Schenectady, changing the zoning classification on a portion of 515 Kings Road, SBL 60.61-1-3 to R3 multiple-family residential.
We also had a public hearing on this and it was discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three?
Item number three, a resolution making a negative declaration of any significant environmental impact relative to the rezoning of a portion of 515 Kings Road from R1 single-family residential to R3 multiple-family residential.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four?
Item number four, an ordinance amending the Chapter 264 zoning of the administrative code of the city of Schenectady, changing the zoning classification of SBL 49.71-5-14 to C5 business.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five?
Item number five, a resolution making a negative declaration of any significant environmental impact relative to the rezoning of 1502 Crane Street from C2 mixed-use commercial to C5 business.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six?
Item number six for original consideration, a resolution reappropriating animal control-related expenses in the 2013 budget.
And you'll notice if you, in your packet, there's a slight change in the numbers there to make the numbers balance out, so that has been corrected on the actual legislation. It's, let me find it here. Adding the animal control and the, for the salary for two part-time people was thirteen six eighty, and then reducing the animal control fees for services lines should be sixty-six thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, not sixty-six five oh, uh, five oh, five hundred. But as I said, that should be corrected in your packet and it's corrected on the actual...
It's still budget neutral?
Yes, yes, it's still budget neutral. Okay, so again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven?
Item number seven, a resolution adopting the proposed 2013-2014 consolidated plan as the final 2013-2014 consolidated plan.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight?
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 575 to Vintage Automotive Service for a design, for a sign at forty-six dash forty-eight North J Street.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine?
Item number nine, a resolution amending resolution number 2013-14.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number ten?
Item number ten, a resolution authorizing an appointment to the city of Schenectady's residency board.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eleven?
Item number eleven, a resolution approving a waiver of interest on fees owed to the city of Schenectady by the Calvary Baptist Church.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number twelve?
Item number twelve, a resolution waiving City Code Section 1A6-6B open container for specified Central Park festivities.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number thirteen?
Item number thirteen, a resolution authorizing Bombers Burrito Bar to serve alcoholic beverages at a public event on July thirteenth, 2013.
Again, discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number fourteen?
Item number fourteen, a resolution authorizing Pareca's Bakery to serve alcoholic beverages at a public event on September seventh, 2013.
This is the Little Italy Festival without objection on consent. Item number fifteen?
Item number fifteen, a resolution authorizing the Van Dyke Restaurant to serve alcoholic beverages at a public event on June twenty-second, 2013.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number sixteen?
Item number sixteen, a resolution recognizing the Goose Hill neighborhood for its recent neighborhood cleanup.
All right, this will be taken out of order, Mr. Erickson, I believe you're going to present that? Okay, thank you. Item number seventeen?
Under contract and supply, a resolution authorizing the award of bid and contract for the fuel management system to Northeast Technologies Incorporated in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred and three dollars.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And then we have two unanimous consent items, number seventeen A.
A resolution authorizing the property management committee to list tax-foreclosed and now city-owned properties for sale and to enter into contract negotiation subject to city council approval.
All right, we had some discussion on this in committee, but I'm going to ask Mr. Pollster to kind of walk through the, the resolution.
Yes, as was discussed last week, if you will recall during the Realtor Day, there were approximately sixty properties that the city offered out to a number of realtors to list and hopefully sell, and rather than having sixty listing agreements negotiated by the city council directly, the resolution that is in front of you would allow the property management committee to enter into the listing agreements with the various realtors, doing it administratively in-house rather than having to tax your already busy schedules. However, the ultimate sale would still have to come before you for the individual approval as they are sold.
Any questions on this? Again, we really wanted to emphasize it's only for the list of properties that we saw.
Correct. Approximately sixty, fifty-nine, sixty, it's right around there.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to move this to the agenda. Don't all speak at once.
But my concerns really were, it was limited to the particular set of houses that we had.
Right.
And then the fact that after they're listed, any offers would still have to come back to the council.
Correct.
Which, which I'm okay with, to be honest, that's a good thing. And I wasn't sure if there was any discussion of that not being, so the last discussion, the first, the initial version that I read, it seems that those tuitions were addressed, so I will move it.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Ms. Brucker, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then to put it on you for unanimous consent?
So moved.
All right, is there a second? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that item will be on the consent agenda, and item seventeen B?
A resolution calling for public comment concerning a local law amending Chapter Six, Section C6-6 of the Charter of the City of Schenectady to grant Schenectady County explicit authority to enforce his liens within which it has an interest.
And again, Mr. Pollster.
Yes, this is, at this time merely a call for a public hearing to provide some clarification with respect to our charter relative to the collection of taxes as between the city and the county.
So again, we just stress this, we are just calling for a public hearing, we're not taking any action on this. Okay, Ms. Prazzo moves it. Okay, is there a second? Okay, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Oh, did you want, okay.
Do you think we could change the line that it said this is all public hearing?
Call for a public comment.
That's what it's doing.
Yeah, that's, yeah. All right, so you will second it, okay, thank you. All in favor then of putting this on the agenda for tonight? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any unopposed? And then to move it to the consent agenda? Okay, Ms. Prazzo, Ms. Porterfield, seconds, all in favor? Oh, okay, hold on.
Just another, no.
Pardon?
I have another discussion.
Yeah.
Just, I mean, as, as we consider this, I know that this is no, you know, new issue, we've, we've kind of reached this topic for several years now, and of course, this is just calling for a public hearing, which is obviously great, right? We have open discussion. Is there any concern that moving forward, even making the consideration for changing the way we're doing things, or, you know, we've, we've passed some law last year saying that we don't have to make the county whole, and there's that whole thing that's gone through, so making a move, does that change our strategic position at all?
No, I don't believe it does.
Okay, I, it's one of those, once we move, have the public, public comment, I just, if we're starting to move in that direction, or if, if there's a change in opinion, I think, you know, initially, we were all in the opinion, it was set, stone, and so this, this does open, opens, I guess, a different direction, so I guess there's no, no problem in having a public discussion, I think that's great, but didn't know if there was a change in, in the feelings of, of the topic, so.
Okay, Ms. Prazzo?
It's slated for Monday, April 27th, at seven thirty, it was a little early.
Oh, that's right, and that meeting we have moved to Wednesday, I believe, right?
Tuesday.
Wasn't there a conflict with?
Oh, you're right, there was...
There was a conflict with the Board of Assessment Review needing the space.
So many cities.
Okay, yeah, we'll correct that.
Yes, thank you, I apologize for that, that's my error, so it would be the Wednesday, does anybody have a calendar in front of them?
It should be seven o'clock.
Okay.
Seven o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
Okay.
I would request that, or state that I will amend the legislation to reflect that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Riggi?
I think Councilman Erickson brought up a good point, and I'm concerned also, since we're being sued by the county, and by just discussing, bringing this up for discussion, I would think since we were advised that we were okay on, last year when we wrote the check, I do have some concerns about that. Mr. Pollster, I respect your legal opinion, but it is kind of admitting that maybe things aren't quite right, if that's the case, so, I don't know, I have some, I have some problems with this, opening it up for that. Personally, you know my personal feelings about this, let them sue us if that's the case, they can stand in line, I guess, but anyhow, I don't think they'll be voting yes on this.
Mr. Mayor?
President, this would, while the action of the council, or the prior years, has, from our side, relieved our obligation to hold the county whole in terms of the collection of property taxes, the county has taken a different position. This is following the county's theory, where they're saying we didn't do some of the technical things, this is starting to address those technical points, which strengthens our original position, so that in fact, it enhances our position for what I believe will be a negotiated settlement with the county.
So again, just a reminder that this is just calling for a public hearing, it's not taking any definitive action on this, so. Now, I believe I had a motion and a second to put it on the agenda? Okay, yes. So all in favor of putting it on the agenda for tonight? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay. In that case, then, we will keep that as for a roll call vote, so.
Okay, yeah, so we're good, so it'll be on the agenda for a roll call vote.
All right, anything else to come before the city council caucus? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Prazzo, Ms. Porterfield, seconds, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, all right, I will now call the city council meeting for May thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, to order, and ask you to rise for the Reverend David Heiss from Albany Street Methodist Church. The invitation.
Let us pray. Oh God, we pray for a world that we live in. Sometimes we look around and we see all the evil that is in it, but Lord, we can call upon you. So tonight, we, we look at our city council meeting and we ask you, Lord, for your blessing, for your guidance, we ask you to be with each one of us. Lord, help us to see the needs in our community. We think of our children, sometimes they hunger, sometimes there is abuse, but Lord, we thank you that we can call upon you in our times of need. We think of our police and our fire department and how they respond to things that are sometimes overwhelming, so we ask you, Lord, to protect them. We think often of our beloved city of Schenectady. We always pray for those that are around, we think of those that are abused, but yet, Lord, there's those that oftentimes are willing to help, and all we need to do is to reach out to those in need. We thank you. Lord, we ask your blessing upon us this evening. We think of our city, we think of our country, and we think of all the leaders that watch over our, our country, our community, and we pray for them. We bring peace to our, our community. Speak to us now and show us, Lord, that being a part of this bigger picture, we can help in every way. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'll ask Helga Schroeder to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
...............................................................
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Prazzo?
Present.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
Mr. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Riggi?
Here.
Ms. Brucker?
Present.
Ms. King?
Present.
Ms. Blanchard is excused.
All right, we have one out-of-order resolution, which is recognizing the Goose Hill neighborhood cleanup, so, Mr. Erickson, I'll let you take the floor. You're on for...
So I'd like to call up any of the people who volunteered to the recent cleanup in Goose Hill. Camille, a few other people here. Great, thank you.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. This resolution recognizing the Goose Hill Neighborhood Association, or Goose Hill Neighborhood, for its recent neighborhood cleanup. Whereas on April thirteenth, two thousand thirteen, despite dismal and chilly weather, a Goose Hill neighborhood cleanup was held, and whereas groups of helpers from the Northeast parent and child organizations, the Schenectady Probation Department, the Community and Home Integration Project, MHA, the Schenectady High School Junior ROTC, Goose Hill Neighborhood Association, the Northside Business Association, community leaders and concerned neighbors participated, and whereas this resolution specifically acknowledges the contributions of Tim Ferrer, Tom Gurlik, Camille Saskanowski, and Michael Aragosa, and whereas this resolution is meant to extend a special thanks to everyone who participated to make this cleanup such a great success, whereas approximately fourteen hundred pounds of debris was collected and removed, and whereas the city of Schenectady benefits from the leadership, volunteerism, and community collaboration, all of which came together to conduct this neighborhood cleanup, and whereas neighborhood cleanups within the city create a sense of community, camaraderie, and a neighborhood pride. Now therefore be it resolved, the Schenectady City Council hereby joins with Gary McCarthy, mayor of the city of Schenectady, in recognizing the Goose Hill neighborhood for coming together to enhance both its neighborhood and this great city. Madam, I move the adoption.
Second by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations and thanks for the good work.
Camille, would you like to say a few words? I know you love public speaking.
I'm really not good at this. I, truly and sincerely, I thank everyone that participated in it, and I strongly encourage the city possibly to consider a day of cleanup and get all of the neighborhood organizations to clean up the city in one day, or to spend a day cleaning it up, our city and our streets and our parks. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, it's much appreciated.
Thank you again. Obviously, we're all very happy when the neighborhoods can work like that to take care of their neighborhood, it's just so great. So, all right, we have two public hearings. The first one involves establishing zoning regulations for halfway houses, something that we had visited some time ago and, or just revisiting. I have two people signed up to speak to this public hearing, the first is Reverend Michael Hogan.
Sorry about my, my rhinitis. I am speaking to you as the president of New Choices Rehabilitation Center, which is located, as you know, on the corner of Erie Boulevard and State Street. We have been considering putting a group residence in that building, possibly on the upper floors, but what I would like to stress to you is there is a great difference between a group residence and a halfway house. A halfway house is a facility housing rehabilitation or training of persons on probation, parole, or early release from correctional institutions, or guilty of criminal offenses. A group residence licensed by the state of New York provides residential services and supervision for more than four, but not more, not more than sixteen individuals who need not be related, and who are in need of rehabilitation. Some have mentally ill, mental illness challenges as well, and so we are interested in the possibility of establishing a group residence in that facility, and I would ask the executive director of New Choices if he would come up and explain a little bit more, and again, apologies for my throat. Thank you.
Thank you. Stuart Rosenblatt?
Thank you. I'm Dr. Stuart Rosenblatt, I'm the executive director of New Choices Recovery Center, and the reason Father Hogan and I came tonight is because when we looked at the ordinance, we were concerned that there might be some confusion around the distinction of what's a group residence versus a halfway house, and we wanted to take the opportunity to clarify what our intentions were and to put it into some context. As most of you know, New Choices has operated out of the 302 State Street for many years, providing comprehensive chemical dependency and mental health support to people in recovery who reside within the city and from within the county. And we see a variety of individuals, many who are mandated by Child Protective Services or the Department of Social Services, so we serve a whole range of people, some of whom are on probation, but by no means do we serve exclusively criminal justice, people involved in criminal justice. We were approached, we're licensed by the New York State of Alcoholism and Substance Abuse Services, they approached us with a proposition that they would seek to renovate our entire building and refurbish it from the basement right up to the fifth floor, and their interest in doing so was, we don't currently utilize the fourth and fifth floors. It used to be a Masonic Lodge, for our purposes, it's not well-suited, as a modest nonprofit, we don't have the resources to renovate the fourth and fifth floor. So they came to us with the support of the state and the New York State Dormitory Authority, and indicated that they were interested in investing eight to ten million dollars in completely renovating and beautifying that building from top to bottom, on the condition that we would build a group residence on the fourth and fifth floor, which is right now just wide-open space. And so, we're currently pursuing that. When we looked at the zoning audience, that, ordinance that's being proposed, we were concerned that there might be some confusion with the halfway house, given the fact that we're currently located, I believe, in the C4 zoning, but the ordinance is currently written, would limit a residence halfway house, don't want to get into semantics, to a C2 or a C5. So what, we would appreciate it if the city council could consider, for the purposes of, of allowing us to proceed with the state, that maybe under existing zoning rules, C4, we could establish such a facility. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on this, so I'll declare that public hearing closed, and go to the second, the second public... You signed up for the second one, Mary. It's the, on amending the Schenectady City Code to include a provision for towing fees and fee schedules?
The one on the fees.
Yes, that's, that's the one I'm calling for right now. So the first person I have signed up to speak there is Dennis Kugler.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name's Dennis Kugler, and I own Homes and Kugler's Towing. The resolution of, that, to establish different tow rates as well as a surcharge payable to the city, which is widely practiced by other municipalities around us, like other cities looking to close budget gaps, Schenectady is also to do the same. I know earlier, some of the council members had some misapprehension about how this, I believe, would be instrumental. Vehicles that are towed by order of the police department normally are people that have broken the law or have caused an automobile accident, which more times than not is covered by their insurance company. To give you references, the fifteen cars so far towed in the month of May by our company for the city, three are for scofflaw, and I believe currently, we have about two-point-four million dollars on books in unpaid parking tickets, five were auto accidents, and seven were for uninsured DWI arrests and unregistered motor vehicles. As most people are aware, if you receive a ticket for a motor vehicle infraction in the state of New York, it carries a fairly hefty surcharge, and in total, I believe, the state collects almost a billion dollars in surcharges because people break the law and the city, or not in this case, the state, takes some of the money or revenue to offset expenses. We're not talking about, we'll say Ms. Smith, whose automobile broke down, and a police officer comes upon her... officer comes upon her, or she is called to say that I need assistance. Those aren't the people that are going to have any type of surcharge or any type of additional fees, other than the cost of a service provided to them. Same thing on routine road service that we provide to people that are broke down, again, that call in. As a tow company servicing the city, it will require additional administrative work on our part. But the overall financial benefit, I believe, for the community is what we're talking about. And I just wanted to give you a different opinion based on some of the facts that I have presented tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mary McLean?
Amending the city code to include a provision for towing fees, that's item number two. Last month, council approved higher fees for out-of-town visitors who want to play golf in our city. Tonight's amendment, if approved, will charge anyone for having an accident in Schenectady. The amendment calls for towing fees. The fees are actually kickbacks from the towing company to the city, depending on who makes the phone calls. As was discussed in the committee meeting, if a city worker, such as a police officer, makes the call to have the cars towed away from the accident scene, the city will receive $40 from the cost that the towing company will charge the motorists for the service. So if Susie Q. or Joe Camel is involved in an accident and possibly seriously injured, the city intends to charge them for having the accident. I consider this ambulance chasing, and I am against amending the city code for such a reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have no one else signed up for public hearing number two, so I'll declare that public hearing closed. Move on to approval of the minutes from April 22nd. Okay, Mr. Riggi moves it. Is there a second? Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. Thank you. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to city council for Monday, May 13, 2013. Official, from the mayor, a list of appointments dated Monday, May 13, 2013. A letter from Carl Olson, Commissioner of General Services, dated May 13, 2013, addressed to the Honorable Mayor and City Council regarding the recommendation of awarding the Fuel Management System contract to Northeast Technologies Incorporated of Schenectady, New York. This work will be charged to the 2013 Operating Budget Code A5132-470 in the amount of General, a letter from the Schenectady County Council of Veterans Organizations dated April 2013 inviting the city council and Mayor McCarthy to their Memorial Day services to be held on May 27th at Vail Cemetery, 10:30 a.m., and Veterans Park at 11 a.m. A correspondence from Julia Lewis dated May 8, 2013 announcing the Bellevue Preservation Inc. is sponsoring an Armed Forces Day flag raising ceremony to be held on May 18th at 11 a.m. at the George Westing House and Bellevue Veterans Park at the corner of Broadway and Gilderland Avenue. The public is welcome. Petitions, there are none.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. No? Okay. We'll move on then to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have one person signed up, and that's Mary McLean.
Item number seven, adoption of the 213-214 Consolidated Plan. The plan calls for $56,000 of community development grant funds to be used for the demolition of rundown houses in Schenectady. This issue is a wish come true for the citizens of Schenectady. They wanted these places to be torn down for a long time because they have been living with these conditions for a long time. $56,000 from the grant is a beginning. However, the federal government can stop the funding at any time. It is not a long-range plan or guaranteed a source of income for the city. Therefore, in order to be able to continue the program, if funding is stopped from the CDBG money, the mayor has proposed a $3 million loan to cover the costs for the demolition projects. The CDBG funds are a start in the process. Rundown and burned-out houses detract from the city's beauty, diminish home values and quality of life pleasures are also diminished. There is nothing wrong with Schenectady. The kind of legislation that is passed in this chamber can be a problem. Approval of the 213-214 consolidation plan is good legislation. The legislation will benefit the entire community. Please approve the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up, so we will move then to the approval of the legislative agenda. Okay, Ms. Perazzo moves it. Second, Mr. Riggi. Okay, all in favor? Aye. And we have one roll call vote. Pardon? You had to call for public hearing.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
A resolution calling for a public comment concerning a local law amending Chapter 6, Section C6-6 of the Charter of the City of Schenectady to grant Schenectady County explicit authority to enforces liens within which it has an interest.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll?
Ms. Brucker?
Yes, I'm very interested to hear what our city residents and taxpayers have to say about this.
Ms. Perazzo?
Aye.
Ms. Porterfield?
Yes.
Mr. Erickson?
Yeah, I think, you know, from, from the perspective of, you know, underlying our, kind of reinforcing our opinion of where we voted last time on the issue of this, I'm a little bit concerned that moving forward in an open, kind of saying, hey, we're going to have a discussion about it, may undermine our argument from a strategic standpoint. But, you know, I have no objections to having, you know, public dialogue on it. I just think it's kind of contradicts itself. So, you know, I'll vote in favor of having the, the public comments. I'll say aye here, but I'm not sure, you know, we're ready to change direction, so.
Mr. Riggi?
Yes, thank you again. I'm certainly not opposed to having a public comment on anything, but we are being sued by the county. And I want to make sure we have the strongest position possible if this does wind up in court. So with that, I have too many questions about it that aren't being, haven't been answered to my satisfaction about this. And if it was brought up maybe in committee and we discussed it a little further, all we were told was, there may be a charter change. So I understand this is discussing, but again, by discussing, does this open up a door? I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but I certainly have concerns about it, so I'll vote no.
Ms. King?
Aye. All right, so, doesn't carry. Now we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. I have nine people signed up to speak, and I will start with Tony Beno.
First of all, I didn't like the idea, the picture I saw in the paper of Freihoff receiving the key to the city. They closed, they closed their business down over here. They move out and we give them a key to the city. So I mean, that there, I was up against. And this Oak Street Bridge, it's closed. No one says how long it's going to be closed, what's going on? How about emergencies for his people up in Bellevue? I mean, it's, nothing is being done on it. And when I was in the service down in Fort Benning back in '57 to '58, down in Fort Benning, General Patton, there's still a rumor going on down there that General Patton didn't like the way the public trains were going through the base. And he told them that if those trains didn't slow down, that he was going to put a tank around the corner on one of the tracks. And I believed that he would, because I knew a person that knew him personally, was a bodyguard to one of his generals, and he told me stories about him. And I believe he would have done that. If the railroad doesn't want to fix the bridge, let's block off the tracks. We've got enough junk cars around the city, put them on the tracks, let them know about it. And we have the detour going around. It goes, it goes down through Helderberg Avenue over to Gilderland Avenue. And I noticed the other day on Gilderland Avenue near Helderberg Avenue, there's green arrows painted on the street, that there's going to be street work done there while the detour is going on. Something's got to be done. Another thing is the sewer work on Shelton Ham Avenue. I haven't been down there. Has anyone thought of having the sewer work done while the bridge is closed? This way here, you don't tie traffic up all the time. And the traffic is terrible. I was going over to Combo Fish Fry one Friday night at 4:30. I went down Broadway, and the traffic was tied up from Gilderland Avenue down to 890. It might have been past 890. I mean, it's disgusting. If an emergency vehicle has to get up there, how are they going to do it? They just can't do it. And I'm looking here. Oh, and the roads in the city. I know we don't have money, but the roads are terrible. Coming down Helderberg Avenue, coming into the city, it's like a washboard, and it's a roller coaster. You go down Washington Avenue, because you don't come up Broadway, Erie Boulevard, you go across Washington Avenue, it's like a washboard. I know we don't have the money, but I was told that we have, we have to get these roads fixed. I mean, people are complaining, and it's just not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah? Assume it's Deborah, remember?
Hello, City Council. I am so glad to be here today. We had a meeting last month, and we had people to show up from the city council, which really helped our meeting and made it a prosperous meeting. And we were, and now we're going to have another meeting, May the 23rd, at 6:30, at the Machasty Room again, the Library. And we do hope that some of you will show up again to participate in our meeting and help us to, you know, share our thoughts and views with the people, to get people interested in coming out, to want to fight about themselves, about what's happening in their homes with the landlords. I went to the hospital today, and they was telling me that there are children that are being injured in these houses. There are people that are being injured in their apartments. And so we want to get these people to start coming out and talking about these issues at our meeting. So I'm really hoping that people will hear what we're saying here today, May 23rd, at 6:30, at the Machasty Room at the Library, 99 Clinton Avenue. And please come out and participate, and let us know how we may be able to help you. I also wanted to say, I agree with Ms. McLean when she was saying about tearing down these houses, that now the mayor is wanting to tear down a lot of these abandoned houses. I am so happy to hear that. I'm hoping that you will tear down quite a few of these houses and build them the proper way. Have somebody that comes in here that really know how to build houses, and not have, just throw something up. And the rooms are so small till you can't even fit a full bedroom into these rooms. These rooms are so congested that people, you know, really can't live properly in these houses. I'm hoping that you will allow a woman to help you and show you, and show these, these men how to build these houses properly. Because living in these dilapidated, horrible 1800 housing, I've been complaining about it for a long time, you know that. I've been saying, these dilapidated houses need to come down. I was looking at a property years ago, some of you were still in the city council when I was looking at that property by Henry Street, on State Street and Henry Street. And then they tore down that whole area. I told Al Jazinski, that was during his time, that I wanted to have that house and that property. And then he said, yeah, you can have it for a dollar, but you could have it just as it is. And I said, no. Bach and I, when he used to be on the city council, we went over and saw that place and said that it was, it was inhabitable. And then I said, you have to tear that whole place down. That place got tore down, but nothing else has been built on there. Should build me a house on there, because that was the property that I wanted to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Lynn Schmidt?
My name is Sharon Lynn Schmidt, Vice President of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association and Coordinator of the Mount Pleasant Merchants. Good evening, Mayor McCarthy, Madam President, and City Council Members. The Mount Pleasant Neighborhood had a very successful cleanup day on Saturday, May 4th, from 9:00 to noon. We estimate that about 75 who registered and another 20 who actually didn't, working in the various areas of Mount Pleasant, participated. On behalf of the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association's Mohammed Hafiz, President Donna Foley, Treasurer, John Horton Sergeant at Arms, and the Mount Pleasant Merchants Acting President Reverend James Bookout and me, thank you to the City of Schenectady's Mayor, Gary McCarthy, Carl Olson's General Services Crew, Police Chief Brian Kilcullen and the Schenectady Police Department, Fire Chief Michael De La Raca and the Fire Station 3 in Mount Pleasant, John Mootivaren, Derek Singh and the Guyanese American Association, Vincent Dona Riggi, Development Departments Ahmad Yousufi, Legislature Karen Johnson, Assemblyman Santa Barbara, 15 Love Tri-City Cricket Club, Superintendent Larry King and the Schenectady Schools in the Mount Pleasant area, Home Depot 1239 Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, the Mount Pleasant Merchants, the Mount Pleasant Public Library, Marty's Hardware Stuart Shops, and many other organizations and individuals, including Mary McLean, who provided picker-uppers. From the good wishes text from Mary Porterfield at 6:45 a.m. to the pickup of yard trash and garbage bags early Monday morning, the cooperation of the City of Schenectady was terrific. We were not able to clean up every street, but we are encouraging residents to pitch in and keep the Mount Pleasant area going to neaten it up. Thank you to the residents of 2nd through 10th avenues and the streets in between who pitched in to clean up their area. As part of the community policing through environmental design SEPTED, dedicated volunteers will continue to visit avenues 2nd through 6th to clean up that area with residents' help on a continual basis. While cleaning up a property owned by the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agencies, two neighbors came out to help us this past weekday, planned to visit 5th and 6th avenues this week, and then revisit avenues 5th, 2nd through 6th again, to keep that cleaned up. And ahead of the code sweeps, May 14th and 28th, and the beginning of the dog enumeration program, which will coincide with code sweeps, we'll proceed to another area of Mount Pleasant once our current target area maintains its cleanup on its own. And we also want to thank those who put our events on their website and their Facebook. Thank you to Mount Pleasant. Thank you to Schenectady.
Thank you. Yes, we commend your group also, and we will recognize you at the appropriate time. Raymond Morrell?
Hello, I'm here to speak in regards to property on 738 Albany Street. It's a dilapidated building. I was here last council meeting, and I spoke about the property. I think I might have mentioned, instead of Albany Street, I might have mentioned a different street, so I wanted to come up and clarify where I am talking about 738 Albany Street. This property is very badly deteriorated, and I sent pictures to all the aldermen regarding that property. And... And when I sent it, it was rejected because there was too many pictures. So, hopefully you've had a chance to see, you know, I resent it with a smaller file so that hopefully every one of you have had a chance to see it. I do thank the aldermen that did respond to that, both Alderman Porterfield and Alderman Rizzo, who spoke at the, at the last, at the last meeting, and also Ms. Drucker, I believe, also spoke. So, I appreciate your comments and concern on this property. We had a very tragedy incident since last April where on 438 Hewlett Street, there was a very bad fire. Of course, everyone knows the tragedy resounding that. But since then, that property has been, has been taken down and it should have been, of course. But the property on 738 has also has seen similar tragedies as well. Back on May 29th of 2012, the paper wrote that two fires strikes two abandoned buildings in Schenectady. On May 29th, 2012, a teen charged with standing, was starting Schenectady Memorial Day fires, just a 15-year-old. And these properties are referring to the property on 738 Albany Street. And then there was another fire, there was another incident in the paper noted, body found in Albany Street building identified as 55-year-old Schenectady man. This was August 19th of 2011. So, there has been numbers, numerous problems at that property in the past, similar to what has happened recently in our neighborhood and on, on the Hewlett Street. But there is no action that has, has been taken on this property. And as you can see, that it's not being secured properly, children to be able to access this building, it's a very tragedy. And hopefully that we can get this resolved as soon as possible and hopefully the county legislation will handle that. I have tried to get information on what's available. I spoke to Ed Schilling, who is the Director of Code Enforcement, and he was not very helpful. I tried to get the Freedom of Information information from him, but I need to know what documents are available in order to request it and he was not forthcoming with that. He actually stated that that information is private. So, I would ask that the City Council, if you have documentation, to please respond to my email with what documentation is available. Thank you.
Thank you. Helga Schroeder.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Members. My name is Helga Schroeder and I reside on Lowell Road in the City of Schenectady. I am here tonight on behalf of the Civilian Police Review Board. Our Acting Chair Connie Richardson is not able to be here herself because she's traveling on, for her job. And so, I was asked to make this statement on behalf of the Board. You recently did make two appointment, new appointments to the Board, but we are still short of even having a quorum. And there are still several vacancies that need to be filled and we would like to urge you to do your best to get in touch with the organizations that still need to make those nominations and then for you to proceed with the process of confirming them. We have now for several months not been able to conduct our real business, although we have been trying to meet, but since we have not had a quorum, we could not deal, roll on the cases we had. And I just would like to point out that the people who have brought these complaints, whether they are justified or not, that's not the point, they are really waiting for an answer and a resolution. And it's, it kind of undermines the confidence in the process among the public if we cannot proceed in a somewhat timely fashion. So, we urge you very much to, to proceed with it. And I believe one of the appointments is actually to come from Mr. McCarthy and another one is to come from the Housing Authority and the NAACP and I think Citizen at Large. Those are still the vacancies we have. So, please, please help us so we can actually do our job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mohammed Hafiz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Member. My name is Mohammed Hafiz and I live in New York, I live in the city, I usually live in New York. I'm here tonight to talk about a property currently owned by the City of Schenectady and it's located on, at 109 Brandywine Avenue. This lot is currently vacant and it is, it is located across the street from the Afghan mosque at 89 Brandywine Avenue. I attend Friday's prayer services at this mosque and a whole bunch of other events. Parking at the surrounding street is very difficult and the large number of cars sometimes cause traffic jams on Brandywine and Becker Street. The Board of Director of the Islamic Center of Brandywine, they made an offer to purchase this lot. And they plan on initially using it for parking and eventually build a community center. They, they will, they plan on having programs for family and kids and to help the community and encourage other families to move to Schenectady. The, the lot now is blocked, the city blocked the lot from, from people to park in the lot. But our purchase offer is fair and they, they turned it down. It's fair compared to the current assessed value. And we are looking forward to working with the city to develop this lot. It's not that we're just going to use it for parking lot because they have some concern about that. We will immediately fence the lot if we purchase it and we will plant trees and we'll put some lights around it. Please lend us your support for this project and vote for this purchase because it will prove beneficial to the City of Schenectady as a whole. I have with me a whole bunch, bunch of people here and the Imam of the mosque, who would like to say a few words. And basically, they were very unhappy about the parking situation the past few weeks. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Karam Jamil, pronounced that right?
Mr. Mayor, Council Members, good evening. I am, my name is Karam Jamil. I'm the Imam at the Schenectady Afghan Islamic Center, which is located on 89 North Brandywine Avenue. As Mohammed said, we are interested in purchasing the lot, which is 109 North Brandywine Avenue. I just wanted to kind of give a little brief history of the mosque as far as why is this property really important to us and why are we after it? Our mosque was established in 1995 and our community has grown 400% since then. Our Friday services draw over 300 people. So, you can imagine how difficult it would be for 300 people to find parking in the surrounding streets. You know, it can easily cause traffic jams and, and, you know, accidents, even parking tickets violations and all of that. We have around 200 families that actually live in the City of Schenectady. They also work in the City of Schenectady. So, our mosque is for the community of Schenectady. If we lose out on this parking lot, what's going to end up happening is that we're going to lose the mosque overs. They're going to go elsewhere into other cities. And that will damage, you know, that will have a detrimental effect on, on the community, you know, and the services that we offer. We, in the month of Ramadan annually, which is the month of fasting, we have more mosque overs that come every day on a daily basis. So, without that parking lot, which, there, there wouldn't be any way for people to park. So, I would request the Council Members and the city to, to approve the proposal and we thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
The city refuses to sell its fleet of cars. According to information that was in the packet for the May 6th committee meeting, the city has ordered two more new cars. And until the new cars arrive, the city is considering an agreement to use surplus cars from the county. The county is willing to transfer the surplus cars to the city for the sum of $1. In return for the use of the cars, the city will have to agree to the following. Sell the surplus cars after the new ones arrive and give the proceeds to the county. Accept the surplus vehicles as is with, with all its faults and in the current condition. Three, county is not responsible for fitness of the cars. Four, the city will pay registration fees, insure the cars, and assume all responsibility for the operation and use of the vehicles. These expenditures are for two cars. Times these kinds of expenses by the 27 cars already in the city's fleet and the taxpayer is paying a big price for perks. What is the solution? Do what is done in the private sector. Pay mileage to employees who use their cars for work-related businesses. CEOs spend a lot of time trying to save money for their investors. Legislators need to do the same for taxpayers. Less spending means lower taxes for all those who pay the bill. Get rid of the cars.
Thank you. And Marva Isaacs.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, Hamilton Hill Neighborhood Association will be having the cleanup on June 8th. I'm hoping to see everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on privilege of the floor regarding city business, so I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Erickson.
One public hearing we had regarding the towing and fee schedule, and we'll have some more discussion probably next committee cycle on that. But I think that, you know, it seems to be some of the discussion is, you know, the reason you need your vehicle towed. And I'm not sure if there's some distinction there, we can apply whether your car is being towed because you're drunk driving or because you're being towed because your car happens to break down. So, that's something I think we should consider. And also, just the, the process for determining how much we pay for towing and whether we would maybe go out for bid based on towing fees and put together an RFQ or not. Couple other things, the, the lot on Brandywine Avenue, it was the first I heard tonight. So, I'm not sure if that offer that came in is, is being processed and just hasn't made it to council yet. But I did happen to drive by yesterday and I saw the barricades in front of the properties, in front of this lot over on Brandywine Avenue. I was surprised because some massive pieces of concrete appeared all around this whole property and it's, it's quite stunning. I'm not sure if, if we've done that in the past or if this is the first time we've done something like that to block off a property. But again, I think there's more discussion on that because this was all news to me. I saw the barricades yesterday and then, you know, we're here tonight. I wanted to thank, you know, all the neighborhood associations and the, and the folks that live in all of them. Goose Hill, you know, we recognized tonight, Mount Pleasant, Hamilton Hills having one coming up soon. I think that's critical. That's, that's what builds community. People want their neighborhoods rebuilt, they want, you know, a different feel, they want something different in their neighborhoods. But that's the kind of things that make a neighborhood a community and, and the more people to come out and help out, whether it's just for half an hour or for half a day or whatever they can, they could spare, I think it's, it's great and you meet some, some wonderful people and you find out you got some neighbors you have something in common with and that's, that's what makes everything great. And then there was other comments about roads again, and I think we will never run out of potholes. But again, I encourage investment, roads, curbs, sidewalks. I think it's, it's critical to rebuilding our neighborhoods and, and of course, encourage if anyone finds some extra money around, we should spend it there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. First of all, the gentleman that came up about 738 Albany Street, yes, we did get the information and as was spoken about today, there are some houses that, that the city is looking at taking down and that one is, was, that was on the list, we discussed it in committee last week. So, we don't know exactly when it's going to happen, but just to let citizens know, we are taking into consideration the things that they are bringing before us. I also did not hear anything about the offer from the Islamic Center to, to do something on the corner of Brandywine and Becker. I don't know what the offer is, whether it's reasonable or, or what it is, but as the comments were made, that they were talking about parking and then after that, building a community center, which is something that sounds like a reasonable thing to do, especially if it's a large community that's, you know, that's in our, that's here and wants to do things to build up the neighborhood. So, I'd like to hear more about exactly what's going on with that. I'd like to also to thank Mount Goose Hill and Mount Pleasant for their cleanup, the work that we're doing and look forward to all the communities continuing to do that throughout the summer and then throughout the year. I'd like to thank the folks that came to the End Poverty Schenectady Forum, which was held on May 4th at Proctor's. It was a beginning conversation about this topic and some resolutions and how everyone that can be included in the building of Schenectady. We did have a nice turnout and we will be, it'll be ongoing, so the next date will be June 1st, which is again a Saturday, at Proctor's. To continue the conversation, we'll be having different speakers and invite the public to come, to give their input, to ask questions, to see how we can work on this particular issue together. So, on June 1st, and I believe it was started at 10:00 in the morning, we'll be doing that again at 10:00 in the morning and we'll be, we'll be going, well, it'll be ongoing, but that is our next one, June 1st. And then after that, we'll, after that one, we'll announce the next one. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Iggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to announce we have a new business that moved into Bellevue on Broadway, 10th, 2038 Broadway. That's right across the street from the building that's going to come down soon, which everybody's happy to hear that. It's United Appliance Parts, Gary Sawyer. He runs a really nice business and he done a nice play, a job on rehabbing, was the old Hollywood cleaners when I was young and then it was a chiropractor's office, but looks very nice in there. And Gary handles a lot of appliance parts and he also can give advice on, if you tell him what's, what your washing machine may be doing, he can give you an idea what may be wrong with it. So, we welcome Gary into Bellevue. That's, it's, it's really a nice thing to have on Broadway. East Front Street is having a neighborhood cleanup this Saturday, the 18th, 10 a.m. and they're going to meet in front of 205 Front Street. And if anybody has any questions, you can contact Carmela Rosido at 372-0036, 372-0036. Cleanups are great and it is a good sense of community when people are out there helping out and, and cleaning up. We worked, my wife and I worked for maybe just a couple hours, a couple Saturdays ago and just that one fence line of Norwood Avenue between the Little League and Pennsylvania Avenue where it starts, we picked up six big bags of litter, just in maybe 150 feet on both sides of the fence line. I'm afraid that for some reason, and we've talked about this before, but we have to get the message across, that littering is not okay. It's not a good thing to do. I went to schools, I've addressed young classes, maybe we can do that as a group, but we have the, the message has got to get through, especially to the young children. This is not an okay thing to do. A lot of resources are taken cleaning this up and it's a good thing, we can't leave the mess there. But I think we also have to get to the root of the problem. We can clean it up and we can have cleanups, I think, every week for sure. And, and there'll be a lot of things to clean up. But for some reason, there's a mentality out there that think that it's okay just to roll up a bag of McDonald's and open up the car window and toss it out and let it land on somebody's property. Something wrong with this. Something wrong with this kind of thought, and I think we have to get to the young people with the impressionable minds, and maybe try to tell them, you know, it's always good to be not a litter bug, so, and good, and the Schenectady Police enforcing some of the littering laws, and then issuing some tickets will also help, but I think these cleanups are definitely necessary, and I like the idea about having maybe a citywide cleanup. That may not be a bad idea, if we can coordinate all the neighborhood groups together, so I'm certainly in favor of that. About the towing and storage, Mr. Kugler brought up some good points, but I think some of our council's concerns were, if somebody does have an accident, they're actually not in violation of anything, they're not a scoff law or anything like that, so should there be exceptions when police do have to call for a car to be towed? I understand that, to keep the streets clear, that's a given. But should this be an across-the-board for every, for every person that has to be towed? And that was our concerns right from the beginning, when we first discussed this, so I'm looking forward to some further discussion on this, and an accident is traumatic enough, and when you're not at fault, and you're, you don't have too much to say, and you get a little out of surcharge, I don't think it's something that people will look forward to, so it's something to be discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Perkner?
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to invite people, and let them know that this weekend, the 18th and the 19th, invite you to the Woodlawn Neighborhood for the Area Woodlawn Garage Sale. Come to my house, buy a bunch of my stuff, there's stuff all over the place, one person's trash is someone else's treasure, and many of the things I have, I probably bought at garage sales, too. But it is a great event. You can get a chance to take a look at all the renovations that have been made to the Woodlawn Park, Bring Your Children, it's going to be a great event, so if you get a chance after all the, during all the other cleanups, and all the other things that we have to do this weekend, please come out, please support the neighborhood. Some of the proceeds do go to the Woodlawn Park, which is certainly there, not just to benefit the residents of Woodlawn, but certainly for the entire city of Schenectady. So come on out Saturday and Sunday.
Good. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Prazzo?
My colleagues for carrying my voice at the committee meeting last Monday, I had a work obligation that I could not avoid. It was very difficult, it was my first committee meeting that I missed, so it felt very uncomfortable, but thank you, I appreciate moving the small amount of money into the Sycam lunch fund as I requested. It's a program that truly can move mountains with a very small amount of money, and feed truly hungry children, so thank you all for supporting that in my absence, I appreciate that. And also, you know, thank you to all the neighborhood groups, because I love people using positive energy and positive attitudes to make a change in a city that they love as much as I do, and it really does, to coin, you know, take the coined phrase, it takes a village. You know, the city can't, can't come up with all of the solutions to the litter and the garbage that we have, and we need every hand and every body, and everyone to pitch in and help, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Firstly, just to go back to the fire last week on Hewlett Street, it was really a difficult evening, we had three second alarm fires, which culminated with the worst and the fatal incident on Hewlett Street. You know, I'd just like to compliment the staff, you know, Bill Winkler, Commissioner Bennett, Chief Kilcullen, Chief De La Rocco, Deputy Chief, Assistant Chief Leguire, Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, the State Office of Fire Prevention, the DA's office, were mobilized within a relatively short period of time of that incident, and all too often arson cases go unsolved, and it's really an impressive track record that's being developed here by our fire department investigative staff, working with the DA's office, and working with the Alcohol and Tobacco Firearms Unit out of Albany, that they've solved a number of cases, and again, this one on Hewlett Street was closed out in a very short time with an initial arrest, and there's still ongoing investigation on that, but it shows that we are working together, and when you have tragedy, that the staff and the community does rally and respond in a manner that puts the best face on a bad situation. On Brandywine Avenue, there are a number of people who are interested in that lot, or I shouldn't say just people, but parties, did put the barricades up to, the other thing where neighbors were complaining, because there were a lot of parking there, there was boats, dilapidated vehicles, old things that, just trying to protect the image, not create liability issues there. Those barriers were purchased after some thought, the cost, I think, was a little under $5,000 for those, but we can use those in other places in the city where we have to put up barricades, they will be with us for a long time, so it's a good investment for some flexibility to do it, and they're somewhat decorative on one side, so they can be put, you know, to block streets, to create retaining walls, do other things, and think it's a good short-term investment. On the Oak Street Bridge, we, you know, had to close that, it's really a safety issue. And the fire department has reviewed the options there, there are scenarios where it does increase some response time. Command staff is always dealing with that, and looking what's the best way to do it. The worst scenarios would be really for weather-related events, and just looking at options, as we get into that with the winter, where we just position apparatus at different locations to minimize that response time. So it's an ongoing review, and again, we want to assure people that the fire department and police department do respond in an adequate and efficient manner when we're called upon. So again, I thank the staff for all their work that was done last week, and can thank the council for coming together also on the Community Development Block grant money. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. One is a media advisory, that tomorrow is the Neighborhood Code Compliance Review kickoff. It'll be where the Schenectady Police Fire Code Enforcement will team up for public safety, and it's going to be, as I say, May 14th, tomorrow, at 11:00 a.m. at the Mount Pleasant Tennis Courts, off of Michigan Avenue, between Skyler and Rutgers Streets. They're going to have Code Compliance Review, Dog Enumeration kickoff, the Schenectady Code Operation and Police Enforcement, and Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. So there'll be a lot of staff there, hopefully several of us will be able to be there, and as I said, we'll get this going for the city. And lastly, just again, a reminder that normally, our next council meeting would be Monday, Memorial Day, we will be moving that to Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Erickson? Okay, Mr. Iggy, seconds, all in favor? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.[1785.26][1785.26](MUSIC) I think I have another copy in my mailbox. Did you read?